Good evening. We welcome you here tonight. We called to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that we have a quorum present, and yes, all council members are present. Given our little activity just before, it's a little hectic getting started, but we wanted to support the efforts of the victims of domestic violence. We'll begin with an opening ceremony from Councilmember Karen Lang.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of our minutes of October 15th. A motion on the minutes from the council. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor approve the minutes of October 15th. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we have a proclamation declaring November 1st as Extra Mile Day in West Valley City. Tom, do you have that? Okay. Councilman Christensen?
Okay. Thank you. This is a proclamation, as we said, declaring November 1st, 2019, as Extra Mile Day in West Valley City. And I will leave out the whereas each time, but I'll get started, okay? Whereas, "West Valley City is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists with the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And West Valley City is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And West Valley City is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. West Valley City has 259 registered users on the JustServe.org volunteer website, 58 projects posted over the last year, and 1,937 hours of reported service hours in the last six months. West Valley City acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2019. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2019 to be Extra Mile Day. We urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place."
Thank you. Next, we go to our public comment period. And I would note that there may be some here who are coming to speak about Resolution 19-117, the development agreement. We've held a public hearing on that previously, and there is not one scheduled tonight. All we did was continue it. So if you're here to speak to that tonight, you should do it during the public comment period. Since there are some of you here not familiar with our public comment period, I would remind you of the following. A maximum of five minutes, although if you could be more brief, because we have a number of people who want to speak, that's okay. It is not question and answer time. It is not debate time. It is an opportunity for you as a citizen to make statements about what you feel or the issue that you want to talk about. And that can be any issue. All comments are directed to the mayor. We don't want to take personalities out of this, so you can't direct your comments to anyone else. We limit that to about 30 minutes. And with that, you see that we do have a timer here. We try and keep that accurate. So with that, we have some who are here signed up to speak. And with that, Jim Esau.
Good evening, Mayor. I would have read this last week, but I do want to bring down this, the great day of opening up the new police department. This is an email I sent you guys last week, so I'm going to read it. "Over the weekend," which had been two weekends ago, "I reviewed the September 24th ALJ hearing/case. And one of the cases, the last case, Mr. Morris acting as the ALJ outright lied to a West Valley property owner and their attorneys. This is not the first time Mr. Morris has lied or given false or misleading information while employed by West Valley City. Mr. Morris has lied and given false and misleading information in study meetings back in April to you all, yet you guys, yet you all do nothing. September 10th, Mr. Morris acting as the ALJ called a West Valley property owner a slumlord and their attorney. Yet, you all do nothing. Mr. Morris says the ALJ has refused my entry to a public ALJ hearing the last seven hearings. Yet, you all do nothing. This conduct should never be allowed or condoned." In the real world, Mr. Morris would have been terminated. But at a minimum, he would have been suspended without pay. It is the ALJ's job to listen to the evidence that the city employees present and make a fair, non-biased, non... Mr. Morris, in his opening statements, has stated that he is impartial and independent several times. He is neither. I have brought this up many times to you all, that Mr. Morris is biased and above, and more, or above is more things that show that. I have brought this up many times to you all, allowing Mr. Morris to remain as an... "ALJ is perceived conflict of interest. Perception is reality in the citizen's eyes. Yet, you guys do nothing." Mr. Morris also has a landlord speech that he gives regularly and a family member's speech. There is no need for these speeches. He's not Judge Judy. The ALJ needs to be an independent, non-city employee. No city employee should ever be allowed to degrade, intimidate, bully, or use fear or outright lie in their job. The citizens of the West Valley deserve no less. Your lack of action is an endorsement of his conduct. Please do something. Thank you."
Thank you. Next, we have John Fuller.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on this resolution for the change to the building in the old Kmart lot. I'm a bishop of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and I, my ward encompasses the three apartment complexes as well as this new proposed development. When we came before for the approval of the amendment, I just see this as kind of a bait and switch. And with the amount of people that we are getting from Salt Lake City, from the road home closing, all I see is that we're going to be bringing more people into our city, and it's going to turn into what the other apartment complexes look like. And I constantly am fighting with the management over there to clean up the units, to fix the units, and I can't seem to get any help from ordinance. One of the things is poor lighting. I've had 12 women sexually assaulted over there because of poor lighting. So I would just hope that with this new development, that some of these things such as safety, lighting, secured access to the facility. And frankly, I'd like to know, are there going to be plans for additional police officers? Since we seem to have such great calls in those three apartment complexes. Thank you.
Next, we have Roger Thackeray.
This is in regard to the same development. Forgive me if I read.
That's fine.
"The council will be voting on an amended version of the development already approved for 4100 South Redwood. The amended version is far from the original plan in that it is now wood-framed construction. Unit sizes have changed, and the townhouses are evidently gone, with an open space replacing them. With rampant illicit drug use going on behind the building as listed as reason to remove Kmart, excuse me, as well as a murdered body found in the storm rain, what activities do you expect to be going on in the open space behind the building? Aren't you recreating what you said was necessary to remove? Every study that you can find on high-density housing says it brings a higher crime rate and drastically increased police and EMS costs. The very process of development is not just thrown together, and the developer has done extensive research, and on every project they do so before they present the proposal. This time, they had a great story of riding bicycles, passed Facio eggs, and what a wonderful place it was. And it was. But when they rode their bicycles, they didn't pass a six-story building with a thousand cars racing in and out of it. They also knew that retail wouldn't have anything to do with that space. And why? Because it's bordered entirely on the north by apartments. And I might ask you to check the condition of that bordering fence." And now I've lost my place. "The precast concrete high-rise..." Yes, high-rise by West Valley City standards was not cost-efficient as originally sold to the city. So it's my belief that the reduced version was the plan all along. There's no possible way that the traffic generated by this development will not affect the area. And they say a lot of the traffic will be pedestrian. They have to cross Redwood Road or 4100 South to get to mass transit. And 4100 South Redwood is the number-one dangerous pedestrian intersection in the valley, with 35th South being rated the 10th. And that's the only place mass transit is accessed from that development. The two main reasons that people aren't happy with the city. First, as is par for West Valley, the original plan was approved despite the fact that the citizens had valid questions regarding the fitment of such a project in the area due to infrastructure, police, EMS, traffic, et cetera. And second, is that with every high-density development that has been approved, there was once one version approved, and just a reasonable facsimile was actually constructed. Very few residents get involved in the city government because anything we say falls on deaf ears. No one in the city seriously considers anything we as residents say, as evidenced by the council chuckling at my wife last week when she said she was going to fill this room. And I get a bit emotional over that. If the project is not viable for the developer as originally proposed, is it our responsibility to bail him out and approve something less? The city council, some members of the city council have suggested it is. Whose best interest did they have in mind? Property development carries with it an inherent risk. West Valley management simply doesn't know how to successfully attract retail tenants and businesses. And I would urge everyone to remember tonight's proceedings when it's time to choose your representatives."
Thank you. Next is David McKeon.
Thank you, Mayor. You got my last name right, so that's awesome. I'm actually a planning commissioner for the city of West Valley City. More so, the reason I'm here this evening is as a concerned citizen. I live over here on 2200 South, or 2200 West, in the new subdivision roughly 3975 South. And funny enough, the way that I found out about the development changing, what they were looking for was through a Taylorsville website on Facebook, and their concerns, and because they border West Valley right there on 4100 South. So back in 2018, roughly April, this great city, which I believe we are, went through many meetings, including planning commissioning, which took about a month for this to pass. It went through a meeting where Steve Patrick was willing to come out to meet with members of the community that are surround this particular development, along with development or... I can never remember what the other one is. Developments, economic development, there we go. And had a meeting with us as well. And then city council, it took a little bit longer for them to pass what was going to go into that area. My concern going forward is, is that if things change, we will continually breed an atmosphere of distrust, distrust between the government, local government, and the community. And that is my biggest concern. I'm proactive within the city because I care about where I live and I care about where my children grow. And I care enough to come to these meetings to share my thoughts, but I don't want that atmosphere of distrust to be there. Because I believe that through city council members as well as active citizens, we can continue to make this city great. Looking at the different plans that are before the city, I have concerns where it comes down to the playground or open ground space they're proposing in one of the plans for the condos or townhomes to be done away with. The reason being is that we are not exempt from homelessness here in our city. As we've seen, we're having a growing number of individuals that are forced to be sleeping on the concrete close to this development. Around 7-Eleven, around the old, I believe it was the old Blockbusters, across the street by Smith's. My concern is, is that this will just move these individuals to this space, to this park, which I believe will be, well, will be no good for the surrounding community as well as this development. Now, my other concern is the height of the condos. If we do away with the basements and go to three stories, as is proposed on one of these plans as well, I haven't fully decided whether I'm pro or against, but I'm a little concerned about the height next to the community, next to the neighborhood that is right there. Reason being is, I know that we just passed an apartment complex down on 35th South and 5600 West, where we made sure we dropped those to two stories around that development when it buttered up to the neighborhood. So I question whether we should be moving that to three stories here in this particular development as well. "The paying for parking as stated in the plan was not discussed." I believe the city council already knows what a problem this could be within the city. And I would hope either way we're moving forward, that it may be something that we put in that it is not, such as their development over here by the mall, that paying for parking is not permitted. Mayor, as you stated back in April, this is kind of the gateway to the city of West Valley. I hope that we can continue to make this development something that the city is proud of. And I myself have great expectations that this complex and development will be one that West Valley can be proud of. And I do so because of caring citizens and surrounding communities that will hold the developer as well as the city council to the development agreement that is in this resolution. My last concern will be on 2200 West, where I live. We have quite a number, our length of distance does not have sidewalk. And my concern is, is I believe a lot of traffic will be pushed down 4100 South from this complex that will end up going over through 2200 West to get to I-215. With no sidewalk on that east side, I think it causes a problem for our children that in that particular subdivision have to cross 4100 South to go to Taylorsville Elementary. So I think that is something that we should also look at. And that the mailbox even right there for the community is upon Inbushes and not elsewhere. Thank you very much, Mayor, and city council.
Thank you.
I'm mixing school with the city.
I don't know. I left out. I'm a whole paragraph. And the individual had to help me. The person who lives at 1960 West, 4100 South. I'm not sure if it's Jim or James or...
It's James, our neighbor, sir. It appears that I don't know an awful lot about the changes that have been made to this building. I didn't know there had been changes until I received a call a little while ago about the changes. I understood that there are still going to be townhouses on the west side of this property. And the reason that I asked that question is, is there is an irrigation dish back there. And if there's townhouses or you're going to dig deeper basements in, then there is a real problem with irrigation dish being at a higher elevation than the basements. And I hope that the West Valley City will take all responsibility in their hands by running this, making this approval go through because we all know water runs down, you know. Now, talking about the homeless people, I have to, every time I turn water into that ditch, and I am part of the North Jordan Irrigation Company as a board of director member, and I have to walk that to make sure I'm not going to flood somebody sleeping in that ditch. I have to wake them up and get them out of there, get their drug paraphernalia out of there, which means I have to pick it up because they're certainly not going to pick it up. I can tell you the garbage that they lay behind is worse than what's on 41st South and Redwood with that young man that's not really young, but he's out there eating pizza all 24/7 that people give him, and the chairs that he has around him, the comfortable place he's got, and the pigeons enjoy his company and whatnot. But anyway, there are two problems that I'm running into right now. Number one, that successful business on 41st South that teaches Spanish-English classes has people parking on 4100 South. That comes right down in front of my house because I am at 1960 West. That's just a short distance from that school. I have people parking in front of my house, and because of that bump in the road right there at Jiffy Loop, you cannot see the cars coming until you stick your vehicle out in the road. And I'd like something to be done about that problem. Either stop the people from parking there in the evenings. And another thing I have is, I have people because I have a drive-through driveway, block one end of mine because they figure I can go ahead and go out the other way. Now, it's a dangerous situation that my family's put in and other people are put in right there. The people that are going 40, 45 miles an hour going west, and me trying to pull out on that road, not being able to see the traffic because of that small uprise in the road right there. When you get all these people in this apartment complex and they can't find a place to park, they're going to be there probably all the time. The proof is there right now that something that's successful is going to wind up on 41st South as a problem. My grandson just got himself an apartment, actually a townhouse out by the prison out there, south of it just a little bit. They have a two-car garage, which takes care of two of their cars, but there's three people in this apartment, or this townhouse. One of them has to walk down and park someplace on the road. That is proof what happens in townhouses and places. People, more people are moving in than probably the building had been planned for, so they have to have a place to park. I hope you'll find a way to facilitate these people because it is coming. It's not going to be a maybe. It is going to happen because you can drive down there, and you can drive by my house tomorrow night when that school's running, and you'll see the problems I have to deal with. I've also complained about this problem to the police, about somebody blocking my driveway. But they're busy enough, this is a minor problem, so they can't get there. All they can do is give them a license plate number, and they can, you know, check into it whatever time they can. But if you're to drive out there and look at that parking situation they have out there, it looks like a college dorm community where you've got cars parked absolutely everywhere. I would hope that you'd somehow give this some real thought about what's going to happen at 41st South because you're not going to help us out much over there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Darryl Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm one that always likes permanence in our city. Apartments don't bring permanence, this brings temporary housing. Now, it's not so much that I'm against apartments because I did live in an apartment several times in my life when I was in college and so forth. But there's a time when you can have apartments and then make sure that they're well taken care of. Where I live, out on, off of 56 West, we have a fairly new apartment complex. But already, within the last few years, the apartments are starting to fall into disrepair. My son-in-law worked there as a maintenance guy. They had to replace almost all the air conditioning units. And so by even changing the standards for this apartment complex from what it is to a lower standard, you're starting to make exceptions to allow the builder to come in and just put shoddy workmanship. And the problem and the concern that I have is also the traffic. Within any apartment complex, with every unit, you're going to have at least one, if not two, cars per unit. And with that, with two cars with over 400 units, you're talking about 800 cars on 41st South and Redwood Road. And I've been there during rush hour, and it is horrendous. And for, to put that on the constituents and the people of the city that live in that area, it's just too much to ask. Also, the other thing is crime. We see more crime in apartment complexes than we do in our residential areas. What are we going to do? Are we hiring more police force? We already have several vacancies in our police force that we can't attract what we have vacancy for. So what are we going to do? Are we going to have more police? Which I believe in having police, but it's, that is what will happen when we go with this. I want you to know that apartments are for their place. I think West Valley has a fair number of apartments. And I think if we were to look and check out the apartment complex that we already have, we probably already have several hundred vacancies in West Valley. And so I would hope that the city council reconsider their decision at this time with this amendment that's coming up, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have some time left because there is anyone else who is here to speak to this issue? Our tradition is you introduce yourself by name and address.
Ernest Burgess, 4414 Summerwood Street, Taylorsville, Utah. Of course, this is brief, but my name is Ernest Burgess, and I'm on the city council of the city of Taylorsville. I have come to represent my district, my district, not the city. We have citizens concerned with this project that will affect, that will be affecting it directly in our district and city. We are concerned with the traffic issues that demand on shared resources, the public safety and economic development, our private property values. Moving forward, any changes made, I would ask, it would enhance or make better public safety, traffic issues, schools, economic development, property values. And it appears the current options presented don't enhance any of these areas. I hope you will consider these things as the vote comes to me. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Adam Lee, I'm at the enclave, which is 30... 36... 38, 40, yeah. Right there on the enclave. I haven't read through the proposal, but I might emphasize and stress that we need to pick a grocery store in the vicinity. Obviously, that the abundance of people in that little grocery store is not holding up. So no matter what we put there, a grocery store is all you need to help the community there on both sides of that. I'm telling you, if you just put a couple of grocery stores there, the abundance of people will feel more comfortable and the stress level will calm down. No more abundance of apartments, please. Apartments, I have a request. But grocery stores, two of them. This would help the abundance of... This would help the abundance of housing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that it? Yeah, looks like there's two more.
My name is Catherine Stahl. I live over in the Shadowbrook Apartments, just off of Grand Wood Road. I've really enjoyed being in the city, but I have some concerns. I see a lot of my neighbors, because I do live in an apartment complex, who struggle to pay their rent, who struggle to make ends meet. Will this, I mean, we already, I've heard people say that we pay more in rent for our apartment than they pay in their house payment. And the problem with this new apartment complex coming in that concerns me is, is it gonna cause our apartments to say, oh, let's raise the rent even higher because we've got this nice building next to us, you know? And what will that do? And my other issue is the safety of people. That is a busy area, as several people have mentioned, you know? You're gonna have more people crossing. I know you guys tried to put in a crosswalk over by Smith's and the Redwood Apartments, but I still see people jaywalking. I still see people not pressing the button, and I'm like, there's gonna be more people, there's gonna be more accidents, more problems, and it's concerning because I have kids that, you know, like to go out, like to be in that area, and neighbors, and I don't want to see anybody get hurt.
Thank you.
Hi, there, Rich Day, 360 North 700 West in North Salt Lake, EDC 84054. Actually, as you probably know or remember, I'm the developer of this project, K-Mark. I've taken down a couple of notes and obviously I don't have time to, and would be happy and welcome the opportunity to talk to anybody specifically about some of the concerns, but just wanted to remind everybody and hopefully help them feel a little bit better about the position. But Bishop Fuller mentioned a couple of concerns about the project in and of itself and whether or not there'd be updated lighting and police officers and that. Some of that that's in the development agreement is specifically states the amount of lighting and green space landscaping, et cetera. Additionally, we're adding solar panels and ways to help continue to make this a sustainable product. The fence in the background was mentioned as being a concern, that we're actually replacing that entire fence along the entire border with a concrete wall that will be very well maintained and an aesthetic increase to the current development. I know the comment was, there was lots of fun stories about my growing up here in West Valley, and although that is true, there have been multiple third-party reports that were performed. This is not simply just a spitball development decision. And I could go through all those, but I won't waste time. Mr. McCune had mentioned a couple of things about being the parking. Actually, I thought that was a great suggestion. In the last council meeting, we actually discussed removing all paid parking from this project so that people who live there are not forced to park on the street because they don't want to pay for their parking. So we were eliminating any paid parking to help feel like that would be a better position for this property because, again, we want to take the input from members of the community to kind of help out. Additional parking was also brought up. We have in this project more than 800 parking stalls, including both covered and exterior parking with 430 units, which is more than the actual requirement from the city by, you know, several dozen, actually. And then Mr. Curtis made comments about this being a lower standard. Actually, the original proposal, by way specifically discussing numbers just on the apartment project, originally proposed a $62 million project, not including the townhomes, we're now up to $89 million in planned spend, which would average to be about $200,000 per unit in terms of cost. So nothing we're doing here is lesser quality than ever planned. In fact, we are adding several other elements that we hadn't initially anticipated. The value of the properties going down the surrounding area, again, this project is one that will demand a higher market. The median income in and around the Salway County is over $80,000, and those are the tenants that we're marketing to. Mr. Lee actually talked about a bigger grocery store, which was very coincidental because Smith's, which is right across the street, actually contacted us and said, once this project's built, our intention is to make this a Smith's marketplace rather than just the current Smith's. So they plan to renovate and add to their current building. And as for Ms. Stahl mentioning the question of rents, our rents will be as such that they are market-driven completely. In fact, we anticipate that would actually push competing properties' rents down simply so that they can compete with a brand-new, higher-quality class A, beautiful countertop. I mean, you name it, we've got it in this project. It will force them to either reduce their rents to surrounding communities so that other people can rent because we're marketing to a much demographic that commands a higher income. Outside of that, I don't know that, I have too many other comments other than, again, I appreciate the process and appreciate people being able to express their concerns and frustrations. And a few minutes, five, well, four minutes and 30 seconds for me to at least make some comment to it, so thank you.
Thank you. That was all the hands I saw. So with that, our public comment period is closed. We bring it back to the council. City manager, any comments?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one comment tonight. Mr. Vesok got up and made the same accusations that he's done in the past, and normally I don't comment on those and would prefer to let them pass anyway in any event. But unfortunately, when somebody comes up and accuses somebody of being a liar and other crimes, I guess, nefarious activities, that just needs to be answered here from the dais. So my comment isn't really so much directed to him as it is to anybody who might be watching on TV or else is in attendance that those statements are not true. We have checked out any kind of accusation that Mr. Vesok has, and his opinions are his own. They aren't substantiated in any way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. To the council, and any comments?
I have a counsel I'd like to make also regarding the administrative law judge position. Past administrative law judge, current administrative law judge, future administrative law judge, all administrative law judges would be employees of the city. They'd be answerable to administration for their actions. They would not be this so-called mythical independent judge that is not beholden for his job to the city. And that's the way that it is when we hire an administrative law judge, and that's the only way we can have an administrative law judge, is to have a city employee work in that position.
Any other comments? I think I would add one. It always interests me, and I've watched it now in government for an extended period of time. There were several comments made about trust of government because they feel that we didn't listen or do what people told us to do. And I think that that is a little misleading. One of the great challenges of an elected official is to determine and try and make decisions based upon overall plans, not upon specific requests from certain individuals. If we were to fall into that trap, government would fail. The challenge is, how do we determine as elected officials? A few loud voices, do they represent the majority? And are their concerns sufficient to modify the overall plans of the city? In some cases, that may be true as we look at it, but it's not always that case. What I've found consistently, and this is in all places of government, it's got a nifty little name called NIMBY, Not in My Backyard. Everyone says, well, yes, we need apartments, yes, we need grocery stores, yes, we need things, but not where I live. Put it somewhere else. Well, but it has to go somewhere. We can't just not develop. So the role that your elected officials play is to try and balance those concerns, and it is not easy. Because, in truth, probably almost every residential subdivision, this is single-family homes, businesses, apartment buildings, would have been stopped because the local neighbors didn't want them. However, our city has become stronger, more vibrant overall. That's not saying that there weren't some challenges as they grew. But we do try and listen, but we have to balance comments from all of our people and from connection with our general plan. We do modify our plan on occasion, but we kind of try to do that pretty slowly and stick with this general direction of things that we do. This has not been an easy decision. Council members have had a lot of issues and concerns, and that may even be reflected tonight. But remember that just because what you say as an individual is not what the council immediately does, does not mean we don't listen to our citizens. If we didn't listen to our citizens, none of us would be reelected to office.
Yeah, there's an idea.
So, enough of that. Anyway, with that then, we go on to, now that we got our comment period done, to Resolution This is the issue which a member of you spoke on. This is property located at approximately 1776 West 4100 South. I think it's referred to as Sage Valley Apartments. There are two options, proposals for us to consider tonight. I think the main difference between the two, option one makes a number of changes, some of those you've addressed tonight on some of the building materials, size of apartments, but that one retains most of the townhomes. I think it goes down by, was it three, by two? Option two eliminates the townhomes and turns that into a green space area. So as a council, we're going to have to decide that. We're also looking at a number of issues. There were changes in some of the things that were presented to us. This happens routinely. Developers will come in and make a proposal, and they say, well, could I have this adjustment? And we'll look at that and say, well...
Sure.
Maybe. How about if, in addition to that, if you're going to request that adjustment, how about you do something more? So the city staff have requested additional items. One of those was mentioned was the fence. Another is trees and landscaping, which we, in return for considering these, that the developer was required to add some additional benefits or amenities, I guess would be a better term, to the property. And let's see if I can talk about, one of the significant changes was, there are still the same number of apartments. The apartment building went down one level. Now, actually, it was already authorized to do six, so I can't say technically that it went down, although their plan was to do seven, they could have done six. But now it's officially at six. Some of the apartments were smaller than originally proposed, and we looked at that to see how that compared with other high-quality apartment space within our city. And what we found is that some of the more recent ones we've done, it's actually larger. It is smaller than originally proposed. The finish changed a little bit from concrete to some wood finish, and then some synthetic wood to brick, and then something similar to stucco, which we've allowed on a number of developments. Let's see, what else? There were some roof patios, but those are changed to courtyards. Solar power was added. Am I missing any major issues? Let's see. Is there anything else the council would like to comment on the proposed changes? I didn't cover all of them exactly. Those were the highlights of some I thought were important. Councilman Christiansen.
I'd just like to mention that since I have access to registered voter lists at this time in my life, I did take the time to call about a third of the registered voters in the square block area around the proposal, proposed area. The major responses I got were that we need to keep the condos, we need to be sure about the irrigation ditch, be careful not to breach that or put anything that might have a problem with it, and we don't lower the quality of the apartments. And all of that I agree with. I think we need to look at that and make sure that the quality isn't lowered. The size of the units, as I compared them with Fairborn Station over here, they're actually comparable or a little bit bigger than the Fairborn Station units. And I had a friend that lived in those units, I've been in the apartment several times. It's massive, and it was only a two-bedroom apartment, and it's actually smaller than the ones that they'll be putting in in Sage Valley. So, you know, I just wanted to make those comments and say that what I've heard from the voters in the area is, just don't let the quality go down and keep the safety up too.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some comments, since I have thought about this for the last month or so, the change proposals, and some of my comments will address the comments that have been made here. I've heard you. We've all heard you. We want to be responsive to that, but I'm not going to try to respond to everything that was said. Certainly, we don't want druggies or campers or oddies on that parcel, right? That's what we get with a vacant lot. We want improvement there. This is not a hearing to decide whether we rezone that property so that high-density multifamily housing can be built. It's already zoned that way, and it's zoned by someone who wants to develop that and has the right to do so. They already have a development agreement in place, which means that if we do not approve their amendments that they've requested, they will still go ahead, they may still go ahead and build high-density apartments there, seven stories according to what they already have in their development agreement as it stands. We're told all the time that there's a housing shortage, and that's reflected in house prices and rental prices. And it's a consequence of supply and demand. As we bring more housing units into the city, there should be less crowding and less demand because there are more options, and that will then in turn lower how much we have to pay for our housing. We don't own this property. We don't decide we're gonna put a movie theater there or a grocery store or anything else. This is owned by someone who wants to and has the right right now without us taking any further action to build apartment buildings. As has been discussed somewhat, this development is planned to be better than some of the other apartment stock that we have in the city, and I think that's important, that we have an upgrade in everything that we do. Everything new that comes into the city should be better. That would be my hope. One of the proposals includes townhomes, and that provides ownership and the pride of ownership that I think is important. That's a mixed development, and I would be more in favor of having the townhomes than having that just be open space for others to use. As far as the construction of this building, a couple of us were at the Marriott Hotel groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago. I think we'd all agree that Marriott Hotel is a good product. Well, they proudly exclaimed that it's a wood construction, wood-framed building for that Marriott Hotel. And I don't see how that... building for that Marriott Hotel, and I don't see how that is a downgrade, certainly within building codes, certainly allowed by law. Now, I wasn't happy with the first proposal that came back, and I wasn't happy to see this property not being developed more rapidly, but we pushed back as a council, and things were eliminated, and things were changed, and the development agreement that we have before us tonight is better. It includes some of those improvements, such as no pay for parking, no basements in the townhomes, so there shouldn't be any flooding. The parking exceeds our ordinance. I don't think we can deny a project because it complies with our ordinance. I think maybe we can look at our ordinance at a future date and require something additional, but when a project complies with our ordinances, is a good product, and the developer already has a right to build essentially that, you know, that's how I'm looking at this tonight.
Any other comments? You can do them now, or after we make motions, or however you're comfortable doing, so...
I can do it now. I'm going to make them brief, or I'm going to start coughing. So my issue is still with the number of one-bedroom units going from two-hundred-and-eight to a hundred-and-fifty-six, and we're having more two- and three-bedroom apartments. I think that's going to park well above our parking ordinance, and I do not think that their parking will accommodate what will actually happen in that situation. The solar power sounds really cool, but it's not for the entire complex, it's only for the common areas, which will save money, but it's not like turning this into a green, or whatever you want to call the, sustainable housing. It's not the eco-friendly item it sounds like. I'm very much in favor of the not charging for the parking. I think that does discourage people from parking elsewhere instead of on the property. So in future agendas, or resolutions, I hope we can change that, make that permanent on all future developments, not just this one. But I am still favoring the first proposal, the two-story townhomes. Even if they don't have basements, they make more sense than the three-story next-door residential, and looking down into those people's yards. So I like the fact that to leave in the townhomes, but only have them two-story. And if we could down the number of apartments by fifty, like we want to get rid of in the one-bedroom, I would be in more favor of the changes, but the smaller units, and more of them being larger, and causing that parking problem, I think it's just going to be too much of a stress on that area. This is not an area like Fairborn Station that has trucks coming right to your door, buses coming frequently. This is more of an location where people are going to drive to and from, and not use transit quite as much as you would hope they would.
I just had a friendly correction to the fact that we don't just have two options, there are actually three, right? The third would be to not approve the amendment, or authorize the amendment. The word "trust" has been thrown around a lot in the room tonight, and in my discussion, all of us have been discussing and pondering and talking to neighbors and constituents about this issue. The biggest thing that's going to impact my, the way I'm voting tonight, is the fact that when this initial development was proposed, and the development agreement was approved, I totally trusted. I know some of the partners of the developer personally, I know them to be people of integrity, I don't question, there's no reason for me to question motives, or deception, or anything like that on part of the developer. I trusted them then to deliver a great product that would benefit our community, and I continue to trust them to make good on that original agreement.
Yes, Councilman, you're...
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Steve Patrick a couple of questions, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Pastrick?
Maybe you can help me out, Steve, and Mr. Patrick. How much land we have, and who should enjoy it in our city?
In terms of vacant property?
Vacant, yeah.
So, right now, roughly ten percent of the city is vacant, and of that, I would say half, half of the ground that's left would be for residential, the balance would be for either commercial or industrial use.
Okay. Did you study the Fairborn Station and this apartment complex? What is square foot, what is square foot for the Fairborn Station?
Yeah, so in the council's packet, there's the proposed unit sizes for this project compared with the unit sizes in Fairborn Station.
Can you elaborate for me, please? I do want to get the number, is that eight hundred square footers, or six hundred, or seven hundred?
Sure. So, again, there's, in each, each building has multiple unit types, so for example, in the, in the Fairborn Station project, there are three different types of one-bedrooms that range from six-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet up to eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet. There are two different two-bedroom, or two different styles of two-bedroom units, ranging from eight-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet to nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight square feet, and then they have a three-bedroom unit as well. And then, so similarly, in the proposal, they have different one-bedroom types, or unit types, two-bedroom unit types, and so forth, and I'm happy to, I can walk through each one, but that's a summary.
I think that's fair enough, right here would be good. Is there any study beside the comparison between us, you know, this project and also the Fairborn Station in our cities? You heard about Fire Clay Avenue in Abida in Murray City? Is, three months ago, ABC News, they had a story about it, and it has a problem. They generate four, fifty percent calls in a city because they have a problem with the parking crisis. It's a beautiful, beautiful apartment complex, if you ride by, you can see that. But it's a problem, and who's going to do a cleanup? Murray City, they have to do that. The developers, they walk away, and then the city chairman and take care, do the cleanup. But that I'm concerned here. Bishop here tonight, you know, I'm not allowed to ask Bishop, but I, I know the area so well, that area so well. Why? Because usually they are over, let me see, fourteen, fourteen years ago, and it's a, they had a high turnover, eighty percent. It still have today?
Yes.
See? I want you fact, all I do right here, fact. I'm not assuming, I'm not thinking, I'm not, you know, speculating, I know it's facts, I think they're facts. Murray City, Bishop right here, and he can, he can tell you, eighty percent high turnover, okay? Maybe Steve, you can sit down, I'm sorry about that, I asked, oh, I have two questions, but I want to have a comment.
I have a question for, for Mr. Pastrick as well.
Okay.
When they changed the makeup of one-bedroom to more two-bedroom and three-bedroom, did that change the requirements for parking?
It did, and so they, they adjusted the parking accordingly, so that there is more parking on the site than the original proposal. So also in your packet, there's a document titled Parking, and in that, it has a table that shows the number of one, two, and three-bedroom units, the number of stalls required by our ordinance for each unit type, and then, so in summary, there's seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight stalls required and eight-hundred provided. But yes, to answer the question, there was an adjustment made in the number of units, but also the parking was adjusted accordingly.
Craig?
Can I resume my floor right now? Okay, thank you. Here, when you have eight hundred square footers, and you, yeah, and then you reduce to six-hundred-and-seventy-one, seventy-five square footers, as you generate, basically you attract different type of renters, at the fact, fact, okay? And you generate a chaotic in that area, uh-huh, it's bad. People, they go on the rent, and they have a party every night, whole bunch of friends came over, a party. Because why? That attractive, that kind of renters we have, from eight hundred square footers to six-hundred-and-seventy-five footers, and we're bigger than a tiny house, but it's a totally different story. Bishop right here, that I'm going to say, eighty percent high turnover, and they, I'm sorry, I'm going to bring some churches, you know, religions in here, churches leaders came to me, said, "Tom, we should not do something like this in our area. Costs us so much money. We have to hire, have them to hire a pan ski truck, you have to talk to move in and move out like crazy, and unstable for the family, for the church in that, in that area. Costs so much money, unstable." And they says to me, "Tom, Fairborn Station is better. Why better? It's more secure, nicer, have basically attracted a lot of good tenants or renters there, and we do it okay compared with the, you know, churches, I don't want to bring the name here, but churches in area, okay? That's the reason why I'm opposed, because it's so many ABC News wrote the story, Fire Clay and Abida apartment complex there, it's about the parking problem, about the fifty percent phone calls they generate to that, to those areas, okay? It's not about parking crisis, but also is a safety matter. The second is a matter we have is create a problem for the churches. It's unstable, unstable. Eighty percent high turnover, and it still have today, eighty percent. And then number three, right here, that you generate, many, many renters, you don't want them to be there. And it's not good for people in that area, not good for the city. Number five is who going to do the cleanup? We're going to do a cleanup. The city going to do a cleanup. Look at the hotel right there, thirty-three-hundred South and Redwood Row, okay? Nice hotel, Class A, they were new. They have a high, they have a contract with the government, and they sent so many people, and they're, people, "We don't want them." And who do cleanup? Our police department. And I rode with them before, many phone calls, I worked, I was there, was there before, we do cleanup, and we still doing it today. This area is going to be the same, because we attracted different type of renters, uh-huh. And others, study, you can study, thirty-three-hundred South, go to Main Street in South Salt Lake area, also another hotel, you can see right there, nice outside, but inside, look at they, a lot of people, I didn't want to say, is, you the nice word, is, they sign a contract with government, and create a problem in that area, the banking problem, the business problem, everything is struggling. We have to take a look at it. Again, Steve Patrick says ten percent, and that's ten percent, we have residential, commercial, and we need to make a decision wisely before we do something. And I, I do say to you to nice, all facts, not assuming, not thinking, not speculating, and that's all facts.
See, Mr. Pastrick got away before I could ask him a few questions. He's still here, so he got away from the microphone. Okay, a number of items I need to just clarify, and I have a series of questions here. Hopefully, we can get them quickly cleared up. One, I was confused by the ten percent, half of which was residential. The number I've been hearing over the last probably four or five years was ninety-seven percent to ninety-eight percent build out residential. Is there a discrepancy there, or is it just a difference in definition?
Well, it's, again, I'm not sure the ninety-eight or ninety-seven percent is coming from, but again, our, as an approximate, ten percent of the city has yet to be developed, and so that, that's roughly about twenty-three-hundred acres, and of that, again, not having the numbers in front of me, more than half of that is, is planned for some kind of industrial commercial use.
Okay, well, let's follow up on that at another time, okay, Mr. Powell? Okay, just clarify it for me. Now, specific to this project, let's talk about lighting. There was concerns raised. I assume that the parking areas meet requirements. You've looked at that, obviously, in the development. Just give us a quick update on what that is and what it will be like.
Sure, so, and the three existing apartment complexes were built at a time when the city did not have any minimum lighting standards. Since that time, we do have lighting standards for parking areas, and so we have, those are measured in foot candles, but basically, assuming this development agreement's amended, the next step in the process, the developer will work with an engineer and actually provide a lighting plan to the city, and will have to demonstrate that they meet those minimum light levels. So again, those are, those are in ordinance already, and that ordinance was not in effect for some of those older apartment complexes.
And that applies either if we approve or don't approve this?
Either way, it applies.
Okay. Next is the irrigation ditch ditch that was raised. Is there any impact there? Is that going to be a problem, or...
So that's, that's an issue, again, as part of the, what we call the condition lease permit, all of those types of engineering issues, whether it's stormwater or irrigation ditches, those will all be addressed as part of the site plan approval.
Okay. Traffic was one that's come up a lot. There was a traffic study done, and you reported that to the council. And just kind of to summarize, what impact, obviously, there will be an impact versus having it empty, but having this developed there versus commercial or something like that, what was the results of that?
All right, so when we, when we compared this development, which has the residential as well as some pad commercials, that part's already been approved, versus just a strictly commercial development, the commercial development generated more trips, and again, that's assuming it was a successful commercial development, of course, Kmart was, had been struggling for years, so...
Okay. The issue of public safety's come up, and I'm going to take a little different approach on this. A couple of projects were brought up in, I guess, Murray, but as I look around, it seems to me that there are an awful lot of large apartment complexes being built. You've probably seen that, I mean, you're more familiar with it probably than I. Throughout Salt Lake City, throughout Taylorsville, other places, it seems like there are a lot of development going on. The market right now is demanding housing, and a lot of places are building them, and have been built. Are all apartment complexes a problem with public safety, such as was brought up with Murray?
So I can, I can address the ones here in the city and say that not all apartment complexes are created equal, meaning that when we look at police calls for service, there's definitely a difference in how many calls per unit there is from one apartment complex to another, and largely what we find, that the single most significant factor there is how they're managed, so those that are well-managed... So those that are well-managed have fewer calls than those that aren't. And one of the things that we've been doing more recently with development agreements for apartment developments is including management standards in the development agreement, which is a relatively new thing we've been doing. And so that's just one more tool that will help us in ensuring that it's managed in a proper way.
And in the previous development agreement, as well as the two proposals for changes from the developer that we have, that type of management agreement is in those?
Correct, that doesn't change. Really, the only change was that it was the parking issue that was raised before as far as not charging for parking.
And that, but the not charging for parking's in the development?
Right, that's an addition with this latest version.
That's one of the other things that we got in return, okay, for these changes. Well, thank you, that helps clarify a few things for me. I only have one other comment, and it's, and it's one I forgot to mention previously. There was a comment, someone's wife came, and she made a comment, and we chuckled at it. A lot of, that's one of the dangers that occur in public office, and that is, what you do and say may often be misinterpreted. And I've been accused of that. I don't smile very much, but when I do, people misinterpret it. For example, if someone says they're going to bring people here, I'm happy, I'm thrilled, so I will smile. And I don't care if it's because everyone they're going to bring will be absolutely opposed to whatever I'm talking about. I would much rather have people come than not. So if someone felt that that was a negative thing, at least from my part it wasn't, I'd love to have people come. And in fact, if you can encourage more people to come, more power to you. We would love to have this place filled, overflowing, every week. We would love to have 200 or 300 people here on this issue. That would be great. We appreciate public input. So with that, may I add one more?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers can speak more than once.
Thank you. I do want to say a short story. About four years ago, I rode along with one of police officers, and we got a call into the somewhere that is nearby, 41 or so, like Redwood Row, Redwood apartment complex. And we went in there, and we took care of the problem there. And we came out, and he says, Tom, usually 20 years ago, we had many phone call then, but now we still have a heavy call in this area. I just let you know that. It's a nasty place. So we don't have much land in our city. We don't have much land. We're gonna make a decision wisely. That's what we are here for.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thanks to all those who came and expressed their opinion. We do hear you. I'm not going to vote in the way that you want me to, but that doesn't mean that I didn't hear you. When I first heard this amendment, I was upset too. And I thought, why are they switching this on us? We already have an agreement. We don't have to do what they say now. But the more I studied it, and the more I thought about what we want to get there, and the more I think about what I want for our city, after our meetings and negotiations, and I think that this amendment is going to be better for our city than what we had before, and then what we could get otherwise. And that's why I'm going to make a motion that we approve Resolution 19-117 with option one, that includes the townhomes that many residents have said that they would prefer. I know you're concerned about the three stories. I'm concerned about that as well. But I've looked at their preliminary plans, and there's going to be an alley or a road between the townhomes and the residential existing homes that will help alleviate that as well. But this is a risk, and there's good things, and there's bad things with every decision that we make. And I've tried to weigh those and make a decision that I think is best for our long-term future. That's what I'm concerned about. And so there's my motion.
Second motion. Motion is properly before us. Further discussion or comments? Mr. Christensen, Councilman Christensen?
I'd just like to say that police call and safety are a component of the management of the apartments. I live next door to a less-than-Class A apartment. I would put it down in D or E. And I live across the street from a Class B apartment. The management is different in each of those. The police calls are different. But there are great people that live in apartments. In the one next door to me, yes, there's a lot of turnover. There's a lot of good people that lived there for years. We had one, and again, Tom, I'm gonna get into the church part, but she was parish society president for 10 years while she lived in the apartment. And a better person I would never want to, I don't think I could ever meet. My parents lived across the street from us in an apartment there. While he lived there, he ran for and represented West Valley City on the State Board of Education. And he also ran for city council, in one of the first city councils, while he was living in those apartments. He didn't move in and move out. My mom and dad stayed there as long as they could, and when they left, they moved into another apartment in West Valley. So it depends on the management. And if you put 300 houses together and 300 apartments, I'm sure you'll find just as many police calls in the 300 houses as you will in the apartments. Just maybe not as quickly. Thank you.
Okay. And maybe I'll add a comment here. You know, this particular proposal that's before us, there are things that I think are not as good as the original proposal. But I also think that there are things in it that are better than the original proposal. Taking those all together, I can't say that I'm overwhelmed that this is better or worse. I just say, well, it's changed, but basically, the concept remains the same. And as I try and balance that with what is happening in our city, you know, we do have a general plan. We do need a place to have people to live. There's, you know, there's a lot of issues, but everything we do has issues. Every, next week, we're going to have before us a proposal to take a piece of property and divide it in two pieces to build two homes, or one mosque. Well, some people would say, well, don't do that. Leave the green space, because it's a field. But they have the right to develop that property. And so unless we have significant reasons to not approve something, then, you know, many times we'll do, we'll vote in favor of it, not every time. But as you see, this council has spent a lot of time on this. You'll probably see a mixed vote, which represents many different viewpoints. So unless there's further comments, I'll go to our city recorder. I speak slow, so they have time to raise their hand. Seeing none, we'll go to our city reporter for the roll call.
Councilman Fiddy Samanu?
No.
Councilwoman Lang?
No.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Four to three. Thank you to all of you who came to participate in this process. We thank you for coming, and we do have a couple more items on our agenda, but if you decide to leave, it's not unusual.
We have four more resolutions. We should be here four more hours.
These are consent agenda items, so. With that, then, we get back to.